America and to its republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Leah, you'll come over here just a minute. I want everyone to see you out there. And you did such a good job. Leah is the daughter of Matt and Audra Herndon, and she's one of our employees here. She's nine years old, and she's now a fourth grader at Concord Elementary School. And she wants to be a kindergarten teacher, which is wonderful. We need lots of good teachers. And she grows up, and she enjoys swimming and reading. Thank you for helping us tonight. Any additions or deletions, city manager?
None that I'm aware of.
Okay. We'll go into our presentation. We have Michael Terror here tonight, who's going to do a presentation on the Lower Town Arts and Music Festival update. Michael, come on up, please. And Victoria? Couldn't do it without, or could you?
I wouldn't want to. Wouldn't want even to go there. Thank you so much, everybody.
Yes, thank you.
Quick update. Mostly, it's just saying thank you and how amazing Paducah is again. I think that this is our fourth year, and this has been a year that has really been a pivotal year for the festival in Paducah, because this seemed to be the year where the entire city stepped in and said, oh, wait a minute, this is our festival. And we had an incredible amount of participation. We had more individual businesses donating funds and labor and in-kind services than ever before.
And this year, we had over 200 volunteers, and that was from all over Paducah. And even people who don't live in Paducah called me up to volunteer. The media this year was just so incredibly generous with us. Lots of radio stations where we were buying advertising wanted us to come do and do a lot of talk shows and spots. The Paducah Sun is just so wonderful to work with, and WKMS and Jelly, which is part of Strat Meyer, they were just fabulous.
WPSD.
Yep, and WPSD.
So, the media was amazing.
Yes.
We had actually more people come to the festival than ever before. And when we had almost 16,000 last year, I thought, well, this is about it. You know, this is what we get to draw on. And I think we did better this year. You know, definitely, definitely pretty strong supporters for the festival. Our numbers are not completely solid, because we took the opportunity Sunday afternoon to drop two of the counters down the drains. So, we're gonna have to go through the sheets and...
And we opted not to get them.
I hear there's alligators.
Working with the Paducah Symphony continues to be such a joy. Daniel is such a strong supporter of the festival. And this year, we, as you all know, had the symphony playing, which was absolutely amazing. It gave me chills when I heard that. And from now on, we want the symphony to be playing every year at the festival. We're committed.
So, and it seems that the symphony thinks this is a good idea, so it's good. Taste of Paducah. We went from having eight places to dine to 13 places to dine in one year. And we had people buying right up until four o'clock on Sunday. It was really, really wonderful.
And this year, we introduced two new things. We had the art cars, which I think was a great draw. And next year, we want to double the amount of art cars that we had. They were so popular. And the art car artists had a great time. They really enjoyed themselves. And the Paducah School of Art and Design hosted a Top Potter Showdown on Sunday at noon, and that brought in, that event alone brought in over 200 people to come stand around and watch this really lighthearted and fun clay competition. We also had three local businesses that donated prizes for that event.
And part of what made the whole thing possible is the huge contribution of infrastructure, man-hours, enthusiasm, and raw technical talent from the city itself. People from the Parks Department, from the Building Department, from City Hall. All of you really brought your A-game and made the festival possible. And thank you, thank you, thank you for all of that.
Yes.
We have a local artist, Rachel Beal, who made a thank you, and I'd like to present this to the mayor.
Oh, very nice. Want to show it to everyone?
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you guys for everything.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Well done.
Thank you. It was wonderful.
Always.
Had a great time. Thank you.
Your grace.
Enjoyed it. Okay, so I get to keep this since it ended up down here? So, I just want to thank Michael and Victoria. You know, it takes people that are real stakeholders to make an event like that successful, to get that buy-in from other people in the community. It takes people like you that know the neighborhood and know art, and you have really done a great job of making this extremely successful. And I know that every year, it's going to build on that, and that it's going to get bigger, and that we're going to have more artists. We kept two of the artists in our home, and they were very positive about the show this year, that I think, and the main thing is, you know, people come in here and they make money, as well as bringing that culture to Paducah. And I noticed that a lot of...
The thing that we have here is Paducah hospitality.
Right.
And that's what makes our show really, really extraordinary.
Well, I mean, I enjoy, you know, having the people in my home, because I get to meet people. We did have one stay with us that had stayed before, and we got to meet a new family, and it was husband and wife and their daughter. And we just have one bed, so the daughter just bedded down on the floor in her sleeping bag, and that was cool. And her husband was a great guy. He was from Hungary, and his name was Attila. So, when my husband told me that Attila was staying with us, I said, as in the hun?
That's what his wife calls him.
It wasn't at all like that. He was a super-nice guy. So, you know, I just want to say, you know, that's just another layer of fun and culture that we have in Paducah, and thank you so much for your hard work on it.
Thank you. Good job.
Next, we have the Lower Town Artist Cultural Exchange with Innsbruck, Austria. Frida Fairchild and Paul Lorenz are going to speak tonight on that.
As some of you know, a group of us were recently invited to show in Austria. We had a show at the Imperial Palace in Innsbruck. And the mayor was invited to go, and fortunately, she couldn't go, but she said it would be fun for you guys to present this to the city council. So, I would like to do a little bit of background about Paducah Arts Alliance, because that's how it all came about. Paducah Arts Alliance is an organization that was started by a few of us a few years ago, actually in response to the city. After a fantastic beginning and numerous artists coming here and buying homes, and the program just taking off like crazy, then the economy happened, and a few other things happened, and there were some periods of readjustment. And the city came, actually, they asked me, can you get together a group of artists and just brainstorm? Is there something you could do? We have a little bit of funding that we could give you if you can think of something that would really help the community. So, we got a group together, and we talked about what we could best do to help with the mission of keeping this an arts destination, what would be good for the whole community. And we decided on a residency. Because we're a small town, and we're not near a major city, we don't have the big museums and the galleries and the interaction, and the possibilities of education that an artist would have there. So, we decided we could bring the world to us. So, if we bring an artist in from another country, another state, the stays were typically around a month, then they would bring with them new ideas, new skills, new interactions, and that's what we decided to do. So, we presented our idea to the city, and the city is used to listening to visions and thinking about whether or not they are accomplishable, and they decided to give it a try and fund us. So, we began. And we had artists from all over. We required of them that they do something for the community. We wanted interaction with not just the local artists, but with the whole community. And we left it up to them. We gave them a list of things to do. They could do workshops, they could do exhibits, they could do individual collaboration with artists. But we wanted that interaction. And so, we had a wide range of interaction. They went into schools, they did many workshops. Wrong way. Okay. And then, in the fourth year, we decided to try for a grant from NEA. NEA is sort of the top of the line for getting money for the arts. So, we wrote a proposal for a grant, and we got it, which is pretty amazing, because it said that on a national level, they were recognizing that what we were doing was an important and vital thing. So, we also began to get more international involvement. Artists were coming here from other countries. They were saying, three of our artists said, we wanted to come here because this sounded like a very interesting, different city, and it's in the middle of the country, it's not a big city, but yet you're very arts-oriented. And this is a summary of the activity for those three years, but it really was much more than this. So, these are the things that were sort of publicized, but we also had a lot of interactions that happened spontaneously, and some artists did many more things. They might have said, I will do a workshop for the community, but they ended up also doing workshops for the schools, or Oscar Cross, having artists in to watch them work. So, we had at least a total of 134 events, just a smattering of things, an international watercolor artist, a filmmaker. And then, we were invited. Because of one of the artists who came here as a resident, and she was from Austria, we got an opportunity that was sort of mind-blowing. I'm gonna let Paul explain that to you.
I will try to be as concise as Frida has been in this. This was an unusual and unique opportunity. This hasn't come our way before, and we really weren't quite sure how to go about understanding what we were getting ourselves into. It's one thing to have these artists come to Paducah, but now, we're going there. We're going to Austria. It started out with an artist, Elizabeth Melkonian. She came in September of 2011, had her workshop, got to work with a lot of the artists, and really liked Paducah. So, in her way, she decided to offer us an exhibition in Innsbruck where she lives. And we thought this was great. You know, why not? Let's do this. So, it was a year in advance. We had, she was here in 2011, we didn't go until April of 2013. So, there was a lot of time, there was a lot of anticipation. What was interesting is, it took a very long time for us to get information about what was happening. So, we're working, and we're moving forward, and then, we actually get to Austria. The exhibition was in the Imperial Palace in Innsbruck. It was built in the late 15th century. This is where the royal, royals of Austria lived and ruled since, even before then. And we were expecting a gallery. You know, we get the palace. The palace has two gallery spaces in it, and we were given a first-floor space, poster with one of Frida's pieces on it. And we had three rooms. We were sharing the exhibition with a group of Austrian artists also. They had two rooms and the entry to the gallery itself. So, it was an interesting mix of their work and our work. Ultimately, we brought way too much work, and it took us about five days to actually hang the show. It was like editing as we're going along. We had a small exhibition in my studio before going, so we had an idea of what we were taking, but until you get to the space, you really don't know how things are going to hang, how it's going to look, what ceiling heights are, what's exactly going on. So, it took us about five days to hang the show. Simultaneously, the artists want us to enjoy Austria. So, we finally get on a roll of understanding what we're going to do, and then it's like, it's a beautiful day, we have to go to the Alps, we have to go to a museum. So, it was great fun, but it was also a little stressful. Ultimately, we did strike the right balance of work and flow through the space, which was, took a load off all of our shoulders. This is one of Terry Moore's pieces in room two of it. Slide looked better on the computer than it does in real life. Yeah. Getting ready for the opening night, Frida's work. The opening reception, in Europe, the opening reception is a very important moment for an exhibition. It's not just coming in and looking at the work. You will have the curator of the space speaking. We had a musical duo playing between speakers. What took us by surprise was, we had the Austrian Minister of Culture come and speak. In most of the European countries, there is a Minister of Culture, and his job is to direct museums, direct galleries and institutions as to what to show for the public, for art, what they want to see the country showing. So, to have the Minister of Culture come and speak was really huge. Regrettably, everybody spoke in German, so we really didn't get the full effect. But, talking with others afterward and picking up a few English things, the gist of the Minister of Culture was that cultural exchange is extremely important. We could hear Kentucky Fried Chicken, we could hear Lederhosen. And the bottom line was that these kinds of interactions break down stereotypes. Kentucky is not about Kentucky Fried Chicken, and Austria is not about Lederhosen. And through cultural exchange, through this exchange of people coming to a country, bringing their work and talking about it, we all gain a certain amount of knowledge, new knowledge about who we are and what these countries can offer one another. It was really quite an extraordinary evening. Immediately afterwards, we, part of the three weeks being there, was we were going to be teaching in schools and giving gallery talks. Gallery talks to students and to the local press that was there. So, opening night was April 3rd. Immediately the next morning, groups of school students were coming in to hear about what we do and why we're here and why it is we do what we do. Teaching started immediately also, and we had the great fortune to work with little kids from about age 10 up to 16 and 17. Some of them were art students, some of them were not. The school system in Innsbruck and in Austria and a lot of countries, there's testing, and depending on how students test, that determines where they go to school and what they're going to study. A lot of the schools I was in, it was sports and arts. So, there were art students, and then there were sports. And sports, not necessarily because you enjoy the sports, the sports were the Olympic champions. You're geared, these were the elite sportsmen, 15, 16, 17-year-olds of the country, that I would hand them a paintbrush and see what they would do, which was great fun for them and great fun for me. Between all of us there, we taught printmaking, marbling, ceramics, painting, drawing, one and two-point perspective. They got a lot. Most classes were two hours long, and we would teach one to two classes a day, which was quite exhausting. Some of us did more, depending on what our personal schedules were going to be and who was leaving early or who was traveling. Some of us took a side trip up to Vienna for the Art Austria Fair, which was really nice to get to the art capital of Austria and see what contemporary art is going on in the country. We got to take in a lot of sights. We got to enjoy some nice spring weather towards the end. And the Hofburg Palace is one of the gateways to the historic district of Innsbruck, where we were virtually every day for some reason. One of the best parts was this apartment. Terry Moore got to stay in it. One of the artists we worked with, Gabriela Nipos Stieldorf, her grandfather is one of the more famous Tyrolean artists, and this became kind of our headquarters. We would have meals here, we would gather to talk about the students we had, the classes we had, find out about the classes we were having the next day, and just kind of relax and recap what happened during the day and what was going to happen the next few days. Ultimately, we all have to go home, but that doesn't mean things ended there. Just an overview of members we have right now. We are actively looking forward to working with these Austrian artists again, and hopefully bringing them to Paducah at some point in 2014. The growing pains of a new organization. We have a lot of irons in the fire, a lot of ideas. We will be working with the, with Ilus Paducah for the Affordable Art Show this year in December. We have numerous workshops that we're thinking, including a full-day art symposium for later this fall. And there's always going to be grant-seeking. We have finally become incorporated, which means we can apply for our 501(c)(3) nonprofit status, which we're also in the process of doing. We are looking for collaborations, and having just gone through this experience and digesting what the idea of international cultural exchange is, we are growing in leaps and bounds, but trying to keep a handle on the whole situation so that we can manage it. From now until then, where we are now and where we are going, the Artist Residency is still the main focus for what we're doing. In the coming year, we have four artists that are going to be coming, two from Austria, hopefully in November, Gabriela Proch and Thomas Rees. Thomas Rees, I got to meet in Vienna, and he's currently exhibiting in the Venice Biennale, which is the largest art fair in the world. And to have someone of his caliber come to Paducah for three weeks is going to be very Earlier in the next spring, 2014, we have two Russian documentary photographers, they're husband and wife, Oksana Yushku and Arthur Bondar. They have shown great interest in Paducah, as do most artists. It's really interesting when you visit foreign countries and you talk about Kentucky and this area. This is a very exotic place to foreign artists. Everybody's aware of New York and Los Angeles and Miami, but there's a mystery about the central, the heartland. Nobody really hears much about it, and it's intriguing to them to be somewhere that not many people know about, especially if they're photographers, so that they can bring a piece of this back. Hopefully, summer of 2014, the rest of the Austrian artists that we worked with will be coming to experience Paducah as well. We want to continue with the idea of cultural exchanges. Going to Austria, we quickly realized, really opened a door. We went there as artists, we got to meet a lot of people, we taught in a lot of schools, and it really occurred to us that this is a great opportunity for so many people, businesses, the Paducah School of Art and Design, to start having an exchange. We could have students from Austria come here for a semester, for a year, and have this exchange of ideas continue, which I think would be a brilliant thing to do. Increasing our network of collaborators. Personally, I have a residency coming up in August in London, and when I interviewed for this, the people running the residency, they are all about art and urban change. And when they heard about Paducah, they had been looking into housing projects, the rise and fall in St. Louis. We talked about the racial issues that brought down Caro, Illinois. They're very intrigued about the riverfront towns like Paducah, the rise and fall of that, how things resurge and come back, the ups and flows over time. They very much want to do a reciprocal project of some kind with artists in Paducah, and the area in London where they're at is in the midst of a 15-year redevelopment. It's a very ethnically mixed area, and there's a lot of growing pains and issues there as well. So, they're very interested in what's going on in this part of the country, and they're looking forward to having me there, and I'm looking forward to finding out more what's going on there. We're also in the process of looking for a permanent home for the Paducah Arts Alliance. We've looked into some buildings in Lower Town, there's empty properties. We're just at the beginning of really thinking about how to keep this in a permanent location, how to keep the artists coming, have a space for an executive director, have a gallery space that's ongoing, so that it has a space, it has an address. All of these things ultimately come back to Paducah, that what we bring, the city can partake in. The doors that we have opened, other people can walk through and see what they can do in other countries, in other areas in the United States. The big picture is, like that five, 10-year plan, is the Global Arts Alliance. Paducah Arts Alliance becomes part of a bigger thing. Global Arts Alliance Paducah, Global Arts Alliance London, Boston, Venice, who knows? The more people that we can exchange ideas with, the more organizations that we can collaborate with, grows this chain of people, that's businesses, that's schools, that's artists. And we can have people circulating continuously with a permanent home with the idea of goodwill and creativity. So, that's the big picture of where we're heading. But, thank you. Thank you for being supportive. Thank you for, you know, going through this with us, and we really hope that we can continue in a positive and progressive way and bring good things to Paducah and take good things from Paducah to other places. Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you, Paul, and I just want to say that we want to make it clear to the public out there that you all, every one of you all paid your own way. You know, this, this was not something the city paid for, so I just want the public to be clear on that. And, you know, I think it takes, it takes all the different layers, as I spoke of earlier, to, to continue the arts program that we started years ago here in Paducah. And, and we have so many different groups that are doing different things in Paducah, and it all adds to that cultural experience that you can get here when you come to Paducah. And it's not just about the cultural experience. We've got to think of everything that we do here concerning the arts that brings revenue to the artists that live here in Paducah and to the artists that come to do their workshops, because the bottom line is, we all have to make a living. So I know that you all are all on board with all of that, with everything that you're doing, with the art festival, with PAA, with Papa's and the recent workshop that they've had, with the Paducah School of Art. It's all about making art successful in many ways here in Paducah, but the bottom line is, we've all got to make a living. So we want, you know, everyone in the arts field here in Paducah to be successful, to make money, and it, it takes everything that you all are doing. Does, you all want to, anyone?
Well, it's just, I'm never, it never ceases to amaze me when individuals with passion about a particular thing, when they, they're just waiting for someone to ask them to do something, and then it just blossoms. And I, I think that's where the passion is. And I, it's no wonder people are drawn to this community, because it's made up. It's like a patchwork. Everybody, no, no one's doing the same thing. Everybody's doing what they can do to make this place better. And usually, when that happens, the financial part, it, it works out. It works out. I think that's a, that's a team concept that I, that I got from playing sports. You know, you can go for individual glory and then the team suffers. Or you can try to advance the squad, and then when you win a state championship, everybody, everybody wins. And they talk about it forever. So I'm, I'm not surprised that we are so, folks from a different country think, think that we're so intriguing, because they don't see that. They don't see that. And they travel halfway around the world to come to a, a small town in Kentucky, and they scratch their head and go, "How do you do that?" It's like, I can't put my finger on it, man. It's the, it's the people, it's the people. So I applaud you all for what you're doing and, and your travels and taking a little piece of our southern hospitality around the world, man, that's, that's awesome.
Anyone else?
I think what's so amazing is, regardless of, of whether it's the art festival or it's the Paducah Arts Alliance, obviously, each artist is committed to their art, but they all step up and do something for the community. You always find a way to work it out. You always find a way to make it work. And I think that is just amazing. I, I can't tell you how thankful we are to have you in the community, and, I mean, it's just growing leaps and bounds. And, I mean, it's very impressive that your will and the tenacity that you have, and I, I'm just very impressed.
Anyone else?
I'll just say thank you, and I want to go with you next time. So, thank you.
I'll just say that, obviously, since I get to live with these people in our neighborhood, what a treat, what a lucky guy I am. I'm probably the luckiest person imaginable, so, thanks.
Once again, I just want to say that, and I've talked to several people about this, how important, and this is just my thought, how important workshops are. And I think for Paducah to become the workshop center of the universe for art will be great. I mean, it, it would bring people from all over the world to Paducah. The artists that give the classes, the school, all the different groups would make money off of those, the artists would make money. Not only that, but the economic impact of those people coming to our community and staying in our hotels and eating and possibly buying things would be great for us. And we've got to do something to propel our arts program to the next level, because it's been, it's been stagnant at one level. We've got to make it rise up. And I think all of us here are committed to the artist and to the arts, different arts groups here in Paducah. We certainly do thank, always want to thank Paducah School of Art, Dr. Veezy, for her vision and for her determination to make the Paducah School of Art work in Lower Town. And she stepped out on a big limb when she did that, and thank God she did. And if anybody can make that successful, it's Dr. Veezy. I would put my money on her every time. And Paul, thank you for your leadership there at the school. So, you know, we've got, we've got so many great things going for us. I just don't want people to get bogged down in, "Well, it's not going exactly the way we thought it would go," because that's, a lot of that's attitude. It will go as good as you want it to go, as good as we think it can go. So thank you, and anything that we can do to help you all, we certainly will look into that. Anyone want to say anything quickly? One minute. All right, well, thank you for your presentation. We're going into our meeting. Commissioner Abraham, if you'll do the minutes, please.
I move that the reading of the minutes for the May 7th, 14th, and 28th, 2013 City Commission Meeting be waived, and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the city clerk be approved as written.
Second. Any discussion? City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kaler?
Aye.
We'll go on to appointments. Commissioner Gold?
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the action of Mayor Kaler in appointing Joseph Benberry and David Morrison as members of the Paducah Planning Commission.
Do I have to read this now? Read this. Right?
Yes.
Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby appoint Joseph Benberry to replace Errol Tyler and appoint David Morrison to replace Paul Felstein as members of the Paducah Planning Commission. Mr. Tyler and Mr. Felstein have resigned. The terms for Mr. Benberry and Mr. Morrison will expire August 31st, 2013. If you have a roll call on that, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kaler?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
I move the Board of Commissioners approve the action of Mayor Kaler in appointing Rita McKeel, Karen Paxton, Michelle Chase, Candace Griffin, and reappointing Rosa Scott, Phyllis Kleimer, Jay Wayne Armbruster, and Gail Ransler as members of the Civic Beautification Board.
Second.
Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby appoint Rita McKeel to replace Lisa Healy as a member of the Civic Beautification Board. This term will expire July 1st, 2015. And whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby reappoint Rosa Scott and Phyllis Kleimer as members of the Civic Beautification Board. These terms will expire July 1st, 2016. And whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby appoint Karen Paxton, Michelle W. Chase, Candace Griffin, and reappoint Jay Wayne Armbruster and Gail Ransler as members of the Civic Beautification Board. These terms will expire July 1st, 2017.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kaler?
Aye.
Municipal orders. Commissioner Wilson?
Upon the recommendation of the City Manager, the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah order that the personnel changes on the attached list be approved.
Cindy, hi.
Hi. We, Mayor and Commissioner, will you remain very active in the HR Department? I would like to point out one new hire you will get to meet next week as you enter the General Government Suite. Lindsay Parrish will be joining us as Administrative Assistant there in that role.
Okay. Any questions?
I have one. The, the new hire in, in PRA office, what, what exactly are those, are those functions?
The part-time coordinator?
Yes.
Pretty much to make sure that events and activities keep moving forward.
Okay, so any, any of the, if there were any projects in the pipeline that, that need immediate attention, that will be directed to who?
It, it depends. We have some breakdown there. Activities, it's sort of peak season for that right now, outdoor activities, that kind of thing particularly would go to that person. We have also some understanding at the staff level of directions that other things would go as well. Inquiries about building development in downtown area for now. Steve Doolittle is going to assist with that sort of thing. Some other program areas, the planning department is pitching in as well. So we've got a, pretty much, the whole thing attempted to continue to carry on through a team effort.
Any other questions? City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kaler?
Aye.
Mr. Abraham?
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order authorizing directing, the director of planning to utilize the $900,000 construction line of credit for the construction of your residential structures for artists or residents in the Lower Town Arts District be adopted.
Second. Steve?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. The intent of this agenda item is to authorize myself to utilize the existing $900,000 construction line of credit from Banteria Bank approved previously for the construction up to five residential structures in the Lower Town Arts District. Currently, there are five vacant properties in the Lower Town Arts District. By applying the construction concepts of the Fountain Avenue Project to the Artist Relocation Program, the City of Paducah may assist financially pre-qualified artist residents in moving to the Lower Town Arts District. Artist residents may select from nearly a dozen pre-designed homes, all homes would require approval from the Historical and Architectural Review Commission. Just as with the Fountain Avenue Project, the planning department will oversee the entire construction process. Upon completion, the finished home would be sold to the artist/residence at no cost to the city. Currently, we have one artist interested in a lot. Kathy Knotts moved from Florida to participate in the Artist Relocation Program and PRA's Artist Cottage Program. The original idea did not work. The aforementioned program could assist Kathy, as well as other artist residents, with her move to the Arts District. The interest cost of the construction loan from the City of Paducah's line of credit will be recaptured along with all construction costs upon completion of the home in the Arts District. A purchase agreement and financing from qualified financial institution will be in place before bids are requested. Bids will be opened and forwarded to the City Commission for consideration and acceptance before transfer of the property. Approval of this municipal order will not have an impact on Fountain Avenue construction. Consideration of bids for the fourth home is on tonight's agenda. Three additional homes will be built in the near future in Fountain Avenue. I believe the Department, the Planning Department's construction management experience in Fountain Avenue, as well as other neighborhoods, can be an asset to the Artist Relocation Program and a solution for the transfer of some of the remaining five properties. And I'll certainly answer any questions, if you have any.
Thank you, Steve. So, the way I understand this, it's no cost to the city, they're required to have a, a loan to pay that back once it's constructed, once it's finished.
Yes, they will go through a proposal process. Of course, we'll offer the property to all people, but as part of that proposal package, they will have to be pre-qualified through a financial institution as part of their package. That's correct.
So this $900,000 is like a revolving line of credit that's always paid back?
Yes, it is. It was an 18-month, 2.75%, $900,000 line of credit. We're about six months into it, so we still have about 12 months on the existing line of credit.
Okay. And it's a, a case by case, property by property?
Yes. Each, with approval of this municipal order, at that time, if an artist did come forward and wanted the city to participate in this, we would have to accept bids, go out to bid with contractors, and then come back to the City Commission for you all to transfer the property and accept the bid from the contractor. So with each one individually, it would take another stop with the City Commission.
Okay. Any questions for Steve?
I think it's just a great idea. I was on PRA Board, and I can remember mowing those properties. I'm glad we turned them back to the city. You know, and, and they stayed, they've stayed vacant all these years during the relocation program, and this'd be a great way the city can help fill its mission, I suppose, to the Artist Relocation Program, to that Arts District. Doesn't have to be an artist, but it's a great way to do it. I mean, it, it leverages your expertise, all the things you've learned in Fountain Avenue can be applied to there, and it, I think it's just a great idea.
Thank you.
It, it really isn't any different than what you're doing in Fountain Avenue, correct?
No. And, you know, there's a lot more flexibility here, because, yes, we have pre-designed plans, but certainly there can be other plans that could be approved by HARC. And also, there's not any federal or state monies tied up in this. It is their own money.
Okay.
Thank you.
Would this ever work for rehab? Or is this strictly for new build?
Right now, it would be probably set up for, for new construction.
New build?
Yeah.
Okay.
I want to commend Steve for stepping up to the plate and offering the expertise and experience in his department. It, it really is quite nice that we look inside for framework and, and experience and templates to make something happen. I think that, that people want it to have happen rather than seeking to create something new. So I think this is a wonderful example of interdepartmental resource sharing within the city, and again, I want to thank Steve for his efforts.
All right. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Good job, really good job. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kaler?
Aye.
Commissioner Gold?
I move that a municipal order entitles, a municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute a grant application and all documents necessary through the U.S. Department of Homeland Security for a 2013 Port Security Grant in the amount of $25,000 for the Riverfront Video Security Project Phase II be adopted.
Second.
This is a 100% grant. The idea behind it is, is Phase II, to continue the cameras along the Urther levee where the Greenway Trail is and the new entrance into our boat launch area, and then also have a camera down at the boat launch area. This is part of the security of the river.
And I think we certainly need that, so, and there's no match, so.
No match.
That's great.
It's very competitive, though. But we'll give it a shot.
Are you saying we might not get it?
Very competitive, but we're going to write a good grant and see what happens.
Okay. I've got faith in you.
Thank you.
Okay, City Clerk? Any discussion on this first? Okay, City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kaler?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Okay. I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order approving the execution of an online grant application to obtain a 2013 Edward Byrne Memorial Grant through the U.S. Department of Justice in the amount of $13,382, be used by the Paducah Police Department, be adopted.
Second. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager. This is an annual grant. We've pretty much been guaranteed that we're going to get this grant. We're just going through the formalized process now of getting a blessing. The money's there, $13,382, and there is no match.
Okay, any questions for the chief? Just another way to keep us a little safer here.
Absolutely, absolutely. And in addition, if you see, we also are going to purchase some trauma kits, and each cruiser will have trauma kits, which will go a long way to saving lives in case something does happen.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, any discussion here? Okay, City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kaler?
Aye.
We'll go on to ordinances adoption. Commissioner Wilson?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the proposal of Kemper CPA Group LLP
accepting the proposal of Kemper CPA Group LLP for the preparation of the city's comprehensive annual financial reports for fiscal years ending June 30th, 2013, 2014, 2015, and 2016, and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents relating to same. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City of Paducah accepts the proposal of Kemper CPA Group LLP for the preparation of the city's comprehensive annual financial reports for fiscal years ending June 30th, 2013, 2014, 2015, and 2016, for a total sum not to exceed $204,000, and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents relating to same.
Second.
Okay, we've talked about this. Any, you all want to say anything else? Any discussion? No. Okay, City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the City of Paducah approving an agreement with Kentucky Department for Local Government to obtain a community development block grant award on behalf of the Four Rivers Behavioral Health Center Point, uh, Center Point Recovery Center, and authorizes the mayor to execute all documents relating to same. This some, this ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City of Paducah approves an agreement with the Kentucky Department for Local Government to obtain a community development block grant award on behalf of Four Rivers Behavioral Health Center Point Recovery Center in the amount of $250,000, with the city receiving $12,500 for said grant for administration. No local match is required. Further, the mayor is hereby authorized to execute all documents necessary to accept the grant award with the Kentucky Department for Local Government and authorized to execute the legal binding agreement for Four Rivers Behavioral Health for the Center Point Recovery Center.
Second. Okay, just, um, you know, I just wanted to say, I wasn't here, I don't believe when we did these last time, but Center Point Recovery Center is, um, a great, um, resource that we have here in Paducah, and, uh, I'm glad to see them be able to get this to, to help with their program. They do a great job. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
We'll go to our, uh, ordinances introduction, and we will not vote on these tonight. Commissioner Galt?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a 2013-2014 Kentucky Governor's Highway Safety Program reimbursement grant award with the Kentucky Office of Highway Safety, a division of the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet. This ordinance is summarized as follows, the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a grant agreement and all documents relating thereto with the Kentucky Office of Highway Safety, a division of the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, or a 2013-2014 Kentucky Governor's Highway Safety Program Grant Award in the amount of $40,500 for overtime hours, attendance to a state-sponsored conference, and purchase of equipment. This grant does not require any local cash or income match.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on this? Chief, did you have anything to say on this? It's another no-match. I, I just wanted to say one thing to you, Chief. Um, you know, we've, we've, you all have done a great job with, uh, traffic enforcement, and I have seen a big difference in the way people drive out in front of the mall. I don't know if any of you all have noticed that, that everyone is obeying the speed limit. No one's, um, going much over 45 miles an hour there in that speed limit.
Uh, uh, thank you, thank you so much.
It's all about safety.
It, it is, and we take some heat here and there on it, and, uh, as I, as I constantly tell everyone, we don't get a dime, uh, for these tickets. It's about saving folks' lives, and that corridor, by statistical analysis, shows that it is the worst corridor, uh, in, in, in the city relevant to, to crime and accident, I mean, to, to accidents. Uh, if we don't do something now, when the new school opens up, that whole corridor is going to be much worse. So, that's why we took it upon ourselves to start doing something now, and maybe we'll save someone's life. So, we're taking the heat, uh, but it's working. The accidents are down, and, uh, so far, uh, no fatalities, so I'm happy. Uh, yes, this is basically, uh, an annual, annual grant that, uh, that we get, no-match, and it's, uh, continued to, to look at traffic enforcement, uh, and, and, uh, and overtime for the police officers to continue, uh, in that effort.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Rhodes?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance approving the recommendation of the Urban Renewal and Community Development Agency to accept the bid of gem steel contract, construction for the construction of a new home at 1330 Madison Street, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows, the City of Paducah approves the recommendation of the Urban Renewal and Community Development Agency to accept the bid of gem steel construction in the amount of $134,750 for the construction of a new home at 1330 Madison Street as part of the 2012 home project, and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same.
Need a second on that.
Second.
Thank you. Steve?
Uh, yes, this is the, uh, Fourth, uh, Fourth House as part of the 2012 home program. Um, we have three more after this. Hopefully, this summer or late fall, we'll get some, get those under contract also. Uh, the first three are coming along nicely. We should be actually closing on the first one located on, uh, uh, Harahan within the next week or two. Uh, Charlie's, uh, here, Charlie Doherty, he's the program manager for Fountain Avenue, he's doing a great job, uh, for the city, uh, talking to people and setting all these programs up, so.
And, um, you'd, the way you base, uh, these, um, awards is not just on the lowest price?
No, it's, it's, no, it's not. Uh, it's published criteria, uh, for how we select, uh, uh, different people, but it's the best evaluated bid.
Okay.
Uh, we did take the bids also to Urban Renewal Community Development Agency, and they have made a recommendation to you.
Okay. Thank you.
It was interesting to watch the two homes get built.
Across the street from each other.
Across the streets from each other on Monroe at about 16th or wherever it was, and how one builder, in a very workmanlike manner, built and came right up, and the other one was sort of fits and starts.
Yeah. And we take a lot of that into consideration when we pick, select contractors.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wilson?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance adopting the City of Paducah, Kentucky annual budget for the fiscal year July 1, 2013, through June 30th, 2014, by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government. This ordinance is summarized as follows, adopting the City of Paducah annual budget for fiscal year July 1, 2013, through June 30th, 2014, estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government at $65,292,500, and summarized by fund as follows. Uh, general fund, $31,176,330. MAP fund, $1,121,000. Investment, $5,407,680. CDBG, $1,364,000. Home, $500,000. E911, $1,688,600. Court awards, $25,200. Debt, $3,354,925. CIP, $7,751,680. Solid waste, $4,878,770. Civic center, $78,025. Rental, $159,430. Radio department, $143,275. Fleet, $534,130. Fleet trust, $979,085. Self-insurance, $991,905. Health insurance, $3,559,400. AEPF, PFPF, and TRSTS, $1,579,65, for a total of $65,292,500.
Seconded. I'm glad you got to do that.
John?
I'm not real sure how I can add to that. Um, as you know, we, we spent the last two and a half, the better of the last two and a half months, uh, myself, City Manager, the Department Heads, and many, many other folks. And basically, we have come out, we asked the Department Heads to live with, um, the 2002 levels, which we've done for the most part. And I think we've, um, got money put aside just as, um, we need to do, and our obligations are all met. And, um, pretty much, you all saw a couple of weeks ago, the entire, uh, 300-plus-page budget book. And, um, Commissioner Wilson mentioned that the budget's $65,000, $65 million, rather. Um, a lot of that is, uh, double accounting. It may go into one fund and get spent out of another, so it's probably, actually, in actuality, it's probably closer to $45 million. Still a big number. Uh, but the vast majority of that is between the general fund and the investment fund, and that makes up about $35 to $36 million. And that's generally, when we talk about budgets, that's generally what we're talking about. So, I'll be glad to answer any specific questions that anybody may have.
And, you know, I think, as we all know, too, that, um, the majority of our budget goes for the boots on the ground, the people that keep our city safe, uh, the people that, um, make everything work here. And, uh, how much of our budget is it, John?
Of the general fund, um, right at 78% goes for personal services.
Right.
Of the general fund.
And you do a good job.
Uh, we've had a lot of help.
Any comments? All right. Thank you, John.
John.
Commissioner Abraham?
I move that a board, I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the finance director to pay for the sole source purchase for annual maintenance of the wall-to-wall murals located on the City of Paducah's flood wall along Water Street. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the finance director of the City of Paducah, Kentucky is hereby authorized to pay to Herb Row the total amount of $24,800 for annual maintenance of the wall-to-wall murals located on the City of Paducah's flood wall along Water Street.
Second. Mark?
Mayor, Commissioners, thanks for the opportunity to come up. This is the third time that I've presented this, uh, uh, this, uh, ordinance over, uh, since, uh, Park Services has, uh, handled it. It's been under our budget. And, uh, we had, uh, in fact, last year was on the exact same dates, uh, as this, as this year's commissioner, the, the day after. So, we're right in the same timeframe. Uh, of course, the wall-to-wall murals have been, uh, in place for years, and they're, the Robert Dafford, uh, artist, uh, murals. And, uh, we had, there were some questions this year in particular, uh, to whether or not another artist, uh, not selected or not approved by Mr. Dafford, uh, could, uh, do the, uh, restoration work. And we, uh, requested, uh, had some questions that we sent to, uh, our city attorney, and it was pretty evident to me that, uh, at least from my understanding and my readings, that, uh, we have the option of either, uh, going with an approved Dafford muralist or, uh, not do him. And, uh, uh, that's, was basically our two options at this point. So, um, when we came up and I presented you all with all that information.
Any discussion? And we've got someone that wants to speak on this, too, tonight.
Mayor, would you like, do you want, you want to go first, or?
I was gonna, I was just gonna make a few comments.
Questions?
Okay. How do you want to do it? I was gonna make a few comments, but I can go second or whatever. Please is the group.
Sure.
Go ahead.
You go ahead, Alan.
Okay. I'm gonna read it. I want to make a few comments about my friend Teresa Perry and the flood wall mural maintenance contract. Teresa Perry is a friend of mine. You should know that upfront. She's a Paducah resident who has a bachelor of fine arts degree. She's worked with Herb Row on 25 flood wall murals during the last eight years. Teresa and Herb painted the last mural, Troop One, together. Together, Teresa and Robert Dafford painted the mural Broadway early in the project. I'd like to talk about the flood wall murals. The city's been advised that to let someone else do the flood wall, flood wall maintenance other than Herb Row is risky. Risky is not, according to my favorite legal, legal mind, a legal term, but a business term. Cities tend to be risk averse, business less so, especially if they're going to thr, to thrive. So, now we have a business decision to make. Hopefully, logic will enter into it. What risk does the city have? Will the vault in the city all be cleaned up by a lawsuit? Probably not. Would more likely a cease and desist order be issued if the city lost its case to control its own flood wall mural maintenance program? Possibly. Is the city going to infringe on the copyright by profiteering from the maintenance? Will the city maliciously destroy or mutilate the murals? Of course not. My guess is that no one will file suit against the city because we do not hire either Herb Row nor Robert Dafford for the maintenance of the existing work. We could use a local competent and obviously well-trained artist who has spent years doing the very work, Teresa Perry. So, what is the issue? Why would we choose the proposal that repairs three murals for $24,000 and reject a proposal that repairs five murals for $16,000? And the more competitive proposal is for my friend Teresa Perry, the local artist. Why should we, once again, send our tax dollars out of town? By asking why, we have the opportunity to save a third of the budget, some $8,000. Too bad we could not achieve these same percentage savings on every city project. We would be awash in money. My advice for the city is to do the common sense business approach and allow Teresa Perry to maintain our flood wall murals as she had done for the last eight years. The exposure is minimal, no harm, no foul, and as Nike says, just do it. Thank you.
Any other comments? Uh, you want?
Well, I'm.
And we, we can ask Row to come up and?
Well, I don't have any, I don't really have questions. I, I just have a comment on, as we try to, uh, do things more locally, and we've had a, we've had artists here talking about, uh, the talent we have here. Um, and reading, in the packet, reading over this, uh, the case, I, I guess that was cited in, in our packet, uh, I, I see words like negligent or the integrity of the, of the project, uh, which I understand those words. I understand how it's used. Uh, but what, what's obvious is that the artist that's requested, uh, or has proposed to, to maintain the, the murals, work with the artist, the original artist. And, uh, so, I don't, I don't see where that could be, you know, and she worked right alongside him. So, it's not like some artists that you just, you're plugging off out of an art school saying, go, you know, go maintain, put the maintenance, uh, touches on this mural. Uh, the skill level, obviously, there. So, um, that's, that's caused, I, I, I'm not quite sure understanding, uh, standing that. The other part is about the copyright. What, what's exactly, what's copyrighted? Is it, is it the, because we own the wall, we own the murals, so what's copy, is it, is it Dafford's style that's being copyrighted? What?
He actually, uh, has copyrighted the images.
So, where did he get the images? I mean, I, I mean, did he just create the images, or did they come from another, did they come from a photograph and he?
They, from compilation and, and that sort of thing. It's his, it's his, he has copyrighted the images.
He is the artist.
He is the artist.
So, he copyrighted his interpretation of the images?
His, the images that are on the flood wall, he copyrighted.
Okay, and to, and to, and to maintain those over the years, at, at some point, obviously, uh, in the reading, he has used the artist in question.
Yes.
To help maintain it. I mean, right, right alongside him, help him, help him maintain it.
Assisted. That's the big.
So, what did she do? Hold the paint, or did she actually use the brush to put it on the wall?
May I answer that, Mark?
Uh, yeah, you were more close.
Teresa has worked with, alongside.
Teresa has worked alongside Robert in the beginning, the first year, and a few other years, and she's also assisted, and that's the key word in this, is assisted. I noticed in her proposal to the city, she said that she worked independently and self-directed, and Alan and I, Commissioner Rhodes and I, discussed that. He said, "I saw her down there working by herself." That doesn't mean she was not left alone. She was, but at the direction of the muralist, and told exactly what to do, not given freedom to create or design on any of the murals. And that is a fact. I talked to Robert Dafford this afternoon, and I don't really think I can, he was so astounded by this. Mark has gotten quotes from him about Teresa being involved in the maintenance of the murals. And they have contracted, if everything goes as we had thought it was going to go, with one of the Paducah School of Art students, the same lady who worked with them last year. Teresa actually quit partially through the project last year to do a project with Yizer, and complained often about the heat and the conditions of working out there, because it is, it's hard work out there in the heat of the summer to do that. Robert does not approve her doing the maintenance of it. Her proposal says she wants to take over the maintenance and restore it in his style. Nobody paints like Robert. Herb, who worked with and was trained by Robert, doesn't paint exactly like him. You can go down there and see where he has done more detail than Robert does. Dafford murals are famous around the world and around our country. We have people who come off of the interstate and come to Paducah often. I mean, there are people down there right now, I'm not a betting person, but I would bet, there are people down there right now that have come to Paducah to see those murals. And then fortunately, when they come and see how awesome our town is, they stay. Some of our mural advisory board members, we're just an advisory board, we're volunteers. We've been volunteers since the end of 1995, when he was invited by the city to come here and tell us if we could even paint on our murals, on our flood wall. And we, as a whole, with no exception that I know of, want Robert Dafford, and Herb Rowe, it works in correspondence with, and he works with Herb. He is not, actually, Herb is not an official Dafford muralist now, he paints on his own, but he goes on Robert's behalf to, like, Portsmouth, Vicksburg, Maysville, Paducah, to do maintenance on the Dafford murals, so that they maintain that integrity. We've been a little surprised by this recommendation, Commissioner Rhodes, because our artists in Paducah are amazingly talented. We would love to see, as we have all along, another section of our flood wall, just featuring our lower-town artists. Bill Schrader said, and I quote, "I wish that our lower-town artists would not even be interested in working on maintaining this art, but would paint their own section. I'll give them the first $5,000 to do that." That's what we want. We want more art in our arts community. We don't need our local talented artists maintaining the art of Robert Dafford. I don't even understand the mindset of an artist wanting to maintain another artist's work. If he was deceased and he didn't have anybody that could do it, or he didn't have someone that had worked with him, Herb Rowe, that comes here, we're fortunate, has a daughter in Paducah, a teenage daughter. And that's a real draw for us, because he has an extra reason to be in Paducah. He has painted every mural, he has researched every mural. When someone walks up to him, he can tell them the history of the research and the design and the process of every single mural that's down there. So, yes.
Does Herb pay Robert a royalty, if you will?
Sometimes, yes, sometimes, no. It depends on what their agreement is, and it depends on how much Robert is involved in the suggestions of what to do to refurbish. Sometimes they change a little bit, sometimes at Robert's direction, there'll be some tweaking done if he, it depends on what they work out. That's a Robert Dafford mural decision. We got out of that when we started maintenance. And by the way, just so you all know a little history here, the flood wall mural advisory board used to sell T-shirts, prints, posters, we still do that. And we used to provide the maintenance the first couple of years. And then our commissioners went on a trip and came back and started talking about tearing down the flood wall. And we had sponsors pull back, and luckily, we had other people come in, like Bill Schrader and some other people, to pay for that. We'd never had trouble with sponsors before. And then our city paid $50,000 to our lower-town artists to paint down behind Ingram. At that time, we came to the city and we said, "Would you take on the flood wall maintenance at this point?" You all discussed it, you had a workshop, and that's when you committed to do that. We gave the money that we had collected in the community foundation toward mural maintenance to the city, and at that point, the city took over the maintenance. We still are involved every fall with an inventory, which is what Ms. Perry used for her proposal for what should be done this year. Herb always does more than what he says he'll do in his proposal, every single time. I'm sorry, now, what was your question?
Well, when an artist does a piece of art...
Yes.
That's their property.
Correct.
For another artist to do something to that art, they, don't they have to have permission from that artist to do that?
Absolutely, and the Vera Act says that that is, did you address that at all?
No, I hadn't. It was addressed.
It was in here, in our packet.
Legal opinion on it, but that's specific. One guy that I look through, it's classified as a moral right, and property ownership does not necessarily convey absolute rights over the thing that's bought. Real estate ownership, for example, is restricted by zoning legislation. Preservation legislation recognizes society's interest in preserving architectural treasures despite private ownership. Similarly, moral rights legislation recognizes art ownership is not an absolute property right. And that's basically, when it comes down to it, that the artist still has a say over how theirs are maintained.
And he has not given permission for anyone else to do this work on his murals that carry his name.
I spoke to Mr. Dafford earlier this week, and he, no, excuse me, I spoke to him at the end of last week, and he said specifically, no, that Herb was the only one that he would authorize for this project.
And I guess I'm confused about that just a little bit, because hypothetically, let's just say Herb couldn't do it, Herb got sick. I mean, is there not an alternative? How are we gonna address that? And especially if we choose not to do it? What if we choose just to skip a year?
That's why we're talking now.
The deterioration is not classified as a value as far as, as far as, it's not something you have to do, is maintaining it, from that perspective. Deterioration by natural causes is deterioration by natural causes.
Isn't the issue really under Vera talks about, where you would have somebody like me, who is not an artist, to be hired to do that kind of restoration work? I believe that's the real issue. If you'll read, if you'll read, and it talks about gross negligence, modification by gross negligence.
And that's gonna be in the eyes of a jury.
But obviously, if you have the person who's done this work for this many years, how could you claim that'd be gross negligence? And yet, which I just learned this evening, that Rowe is suggesting going and getting an art student who's never had any experience with Herb Rowe.
Excuse me. That is not what I suggested. What I told you is that we had a Paducah School of Art student last year assist Herb, under his guidance, just as Ms. Perry has been. She did not work independently. She didn't make a design or creation decision. She never has, Commissioner, never.
I disagree, and we'll just drop it at that.
Yeah, we can, we can agree to disagree. But that's what the Vera is about. It's that any kind of maintenance done, or work done on art, has to be with the approval of the original artist. Herb has actually painted everything from the caboose on down, totally without Robert, other than emailing back and forth and talking about how they're going to do it. That's how much he trusts him. We are blessed and fortunate to have him agree to paint in Paducah, an arts community. I'm quite embarrassed, to be real honest, that we're even having this discussion, that we want someone to come in and take over the Dafford art. I'm just, you know, sponsors bought Dafford art.
It is a business discussion, and as Commissioner Galt said, what happens if Herb Rowe perishes the thought this evening, that he dies in an automobile?
Well, Robert Dafford, every year, says that he personally will be here to refurbish. His daughters also paint, and there is also a team of Dafford murals, many of whom have painted in Paducah. He trusts Herb. He doesn't even come to Paducah because he trusts what he does. So, I mean, there are a lot of other people on the Dafford mural team, but Teresa Perry isn't one of them. She assists them on occasion when they're in Paducah.
We disagree.
We do.
We each think each other's right.
My question, personalities aside, all those things aside, it's trying to figure out how to get over the hurdle. I understand, but there's only one sole source. These will be here forever, hopefully.
When that happens, according to Vera, then you have to make a decision, because then you have to get someone else. We haven't reached that. There are plenty of options of Dafford muralists that can come and restore the Dafford art here in Paducah. Otherwise, it deteriorates.
And I guess my question is, did anyone say to him, "Would you be willing to relinquish those rights and work with us training someone here locally? If we paid you X number of dollars, because we have an art school, we have a local community of trained artists, would you be willing to work with someone to get them trained up locally? So we have that right here in our community, because they're gonna be here." That's my question. Did someone ask him that question?
Yeah, what we've done, in years past, actually before the four lower-town artists painted behind Ingram, we invited, and the media was even invited, to come, because we wanted people to know that this very front and center art project that we have in downtown Paducah, that it's not us and them, we're all together in this.
Right.
We're promoting Paducah in what's best for our community. So we invited those four artists, and most of them came and did a walk-through, and Herb shared everything he could with them about what he's learned through the years. Mural, that kind of art's very different than other art. Ms. Perry will tell you that, because she's, because of the mural work that she did down behind Ingram. Yes and no to answer your question? We have, they train people, but they don't train them to let them go on a mural. They train them to assist them and work with them. And that's how Herb was trained, in the beginning, by Robert Dafford. He worked for years with him. He left college, and he started doing that with Robert, and he's made, he has an exhibit now down at Maiden Alley Cinema, and will through the 21st of June.
But I think what I'm hearing you say is, as an artist, even though I worked on that mural for eight years, I'm not in the training process.
Well, she's never expressed this particular...
Personalities aside, just an artist.
Has not expressed an interest to do this until now. That was why it was kind of a surprise. Some years she assists, some years she doesn't. And why would we want to turn it over to someone who has assisted, not created, researched, designed, done all of the creative, not to say she, Teresa is very talented.
I'm not talking wrong about Teresa or him. I'm talking about a long-term plan.
Well, why don't we ask him if we want to do that, if we want...
That's what I'm getting at, a long-term plan to get someone here in the community that, does that make sense to you?
It would be...
Makes total perfect sense.
It would be, it would be a natural transition.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
There's an artist sitting here right in the front row. You all deal with your work being protected every day. Can, I mean, can you speak to that?
I'd be really interested to hear how other artists would feel about someone else coming in and doing work on their art.
The process is going the way it should. Robert has...
You don't want it...
...people he trusts to work on his murals, and that's the way it should be. These are, I am not a mural artist, but outside art like that is a maintenance issue forever, and there needs to be a contingency being designed, because at some point, all these people are going to be gone. They're all going to work on other projects, they're going to pass away, whatever. And there needs to be a contingency set up so that people can move in and restore during this whole process. Because you are looking down, not just this year, but five years, 50 years, 100 years. Who's gonna do this in 100 years? You have to already get those kind of plans going.
I'm like, well, it probably won't be here then, but it will fall apart by then.
Rick says it will, Rick says it will.
I got carried away. But yeah, those are things on projects like that, and those are projects, you know, with architecture as well, when buildings need to be, if the architect is still alive, you go to him to find out who he would hire to restore. So Robert...
I guess...
Let's do it, I love the idea, it's great.
I guess my thought on that is, okay, if you're Robert Dafford, and you have a group of people that work for you, and they're being trained by you, and you die, you would have some kind of business plan of someone that would take your business over, someone that's been trained in that, that would continue to train people in that style of painting. I mean, I would think you wouldn't just, you wouldn't just hold all of that inside you.
He doesn't, and he, he has...
Let it out for other people to be able to do the work.
Mayor, he has, and he does. He, matter of fact, even in his will, we talked about this this week, I've talked with Robert probably more this week than any time, about the future of his business. And different cities, he has particular people that he trusts, whoever said that, trust is what the issue is, trust to continue that project on in the Dafford style. And I know in Paducah, it's Herb and his daughter, and I do know that. And I know that there are several other Dafford muralists who are not with Dafford Murals now, but they paint in other cities, and they're in communication with Robert, and they've been assigned to other cities, and that's what they, Vicksburg, Maysville, some he goes to, some he doesn't. It's a compliment when he doesn't feel like he has to be here and hold the hand of the artist. He trusts them, and I think that's a compliment, and we want him to continue with that confidence in us. Mayor, I mean, Commissioner Galt, I really do think that's a great idea, and I think that we need to pursue that, and I think that they would be open for that. You know, training, specifically training some of our students to learn to do what they do and how they do it. So I think that's a great idea.
I mean, it may benefit both sides, actually.
Oh, absolutely.
So we need to get in this... Doesn't hurt to have the conversation.
And he actually said, when he knew we were gonna be discussing this, he's in Portsmouth right now, and he said, "Do I need to drive down?" And I didn't know till this afternoon that this was on the agenda. It was too late for him to physically get from Portsmouth to Paducah. So I've looked on my phone, and he has texted twice, I haven't even looked at it yet since we've, since we've been here, and he's just curious, he's just curious, you know, about where this is all coming from. I think he would love that idea, I think Herb is a great teacher also, between the two of them, I think it's a great idea.
So we could have a workshop on that, maybe, some night.
Well, I think we'd want to, I don't know, educate ourselves about the process, to work with the artists to get that done. I can't imagine I'd be the first ones that ever ask.
And Rowe, you need not be embarrassed that we're talking about it. We wouldn't be talking about it had not, had there not been a proposal to do something different. So we gotta talk about it.
So I should get over it?
Yeah, yeah, a little bit.
And we're gonna be friends.
Always, yeah, we just disagree.
All right.
That's okay, it's healthy.
Thank you, Rowe.
Okay.
Mark, thank you. Okay, we have Commissioner Galt next.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky approving a contract with Westlake, Reed, and Luskowski to complete a concept study for the Columbia Theater and authorizing the execution of said contract. This ordinance is summarized as follows, the city hereby approves the concept study contract between the City of Paducah and Westlake, Reed, and Luskowski for the Columbia Theater in the lump sum amount of $30,000, and up to $3,000 for reimbursable expenses, and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same.
Second.
Hi, how are you tonight?
Hi, good evening. I know several of you, but for those who don't know me, I'm Randy Davis. I am architect and project manager for Baptist Health Paducah. I was on the Main Street Board for seven and a half years, starting back in the mid-'90s, and I've just been appointed to the PRA Board recently. And I've been on the Design Committee for Main Street for, I think, early '90s, so I was thinking today, that's been over 20 years, so I have a lot of experience with that organization. I would like to speak tonight and just update you on where we have been over the last year with the Columbia Theater project, and then talk a little bit about the concept plan that you are... that you are voting on tonight. Over the last year, the Columbia Task Force has been formed and consists of eight members. The majority is made up of PRA Board members, many of which are here tonight. The Task Force is currently working on vision statement, frequently asked question and answer fact sheet, the development of a website dedicated to the project, and we are continuing to update the Columbia Facebook page. A little over a year ago, Deputy Chief, Fire Chief Greg Cherry conducted an inspection of the building and gave PRA a list of items that needed to be complete before we could have volunteer groups come in and clean out the theater. The majority of items on this list has been completed. I'd like to give you, tell you the items that have been completed to date. The fuel tanks in the basement have been drained. A $3,000 in-kind donation was made by Ray Blackensun, which consisted of replacing a set of double pair of rotten doors on the back of the building. Also, a single door was replaced. That will allow us access to remove debris when we start the cleanup process. Ray Blackensun also has repaired the landing going to the basement, as well as patched a hole in the floor on the second floor balcony. Crown Electric has upgraded all the temporary electrical services in the building. Crown provided us with a not-to-exceed estimate of $2,000, which the Columbia Club will be paying for. And as you know, the Columbia Club is the 501(c)(3) arm of the PRA organization. Crown also provided an additional $2,174 of in-kind donations to complete the work. Bacon Farmer Workman has provided an in-kind donation of a preliminary environmental screening. And in the next few weeks, the new doors that Ray Blackensun put up will be painted and we will begin an environmental survey. And both of those items will be paid for out of the Columbia Club funds. Once the environmental survey is complete, the final item on the list before the volunteers can come in is we will have the asbestos in the building abated. The next big step that we need to take to complete, to continue on the project is the concept plan, which you're voting on tonight. It consists of four areas, investigation, programming, planning, and estimating. The investigation part of the work will identify the existing conditions of the building, the building systems, site constraints, existing services that are at the building as it stands today. The investigation, we are investigating what we actually have physically to work with. The programming piece will help us to determine the realistic uses for the building based on the size of the building and on the existing constraints that we have. Planning piece, we will be given concept plans for floor plans, sections, and elevations of our building and how the program that we come up with will fit into the existing building. And then we will have cost estimates based on that concept plan. The Design Committee invited the architectural and engineering firm of Westlake, Reed, Liskowski to visit the theater in February of this year after researching several preservation firms. Paul Samborski, an architect in principle with the firm, spent the day touring and meeting with the PRA Board. Westlake, Reed, Liskowski is an expert in historic theater restoration. A few of their in-house services include theater consultation, lighting design, acoustics, audiovisual, historic preservation, and they have extensive experience in historic rehabilitation tax credits, all of which are important aspects of completing this project successfully. After the concept study is done, the next step would be a feasibility study to see how we should proceed with this project. And in conclusion, I would just like to say, the PRA Board is very excited about this, as well as the community. You can see all the in-kind donations we've had from local businesses and all the work the PRA Board has put into this the last year, and we are excited about moving forward with this project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All right. I think we all understand that theater was gifted to us and that we have a responsibility toward it now since it was gifted to the city. And you all have a good plan and I think we need to move forward with this. All right, City Managers' Report.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Randy kept mentioning that we were going to vote on it and just saw, it's an introduction. We'll vote on it next.
Yeah.
It has to have two readings because it is an ordinance.
The previous item with respect to the mural restoration contract, just for clarification purposes, is that the commissions intend to move forward with the contract for this season and then pursue a program such as what was discussed to move forward from that point?
I think, I mean, I think we should probably do that and then look at options for the next season. What do you all think?
Well, is there.
Or get a.
Or have him come here and put it off for a while and see how we feel about our conversation with Mr. Dafford?
Well, I thought we need, we need some kind of long-term plan to take care of the murals. We don't have that right now, so.
Do we need that before we move forward with the, what we had approved for this year?
We move forward with this year and then pursue that at the same time, or do we?
I mean, is that.
Well, is there a specific reason that Herb comes in July? No?
He can come, he can come whenever. He's actually on his way here now. If something goes awry tonight, he will just keep on going up the course.
So, there's really no hurry?
No, there's not hurry. Other than you all are doing the budget and that, they need to plan it for the season and.
Right.
Our longevity and our.
I understand that.
Part of that, $6,000, I think, is bringing board, that is right back into our community, including gas, housing, actually, we're looking at a furniture department in Lower Town, saying that he has a commitment to go to spend there for two months, probably see for sure tomorrow. And we pay the artists too. So, all that money does go on these projects. We do need to tell him something, though. We do need to let him know. Let Robert and Herb know if they're going to be paying for this year.
Or if we're just going to let them go for this year?
Oh, my goodness.
Well, I mean, that would be the, if we.
Use him or nothing. I mean, that's basically what it was. Either use Robert or if he's not going to, if she's not going to say, okay, I'm going to authorize this person to do the restoration and if we decide, no, we don't want to do that, then the murals stay just like they are.
For this year.
Untouched up this year.
Right.
Well, I guess what I'm thinking is, if we're going to talk about trying to train someone or get a long-term plan, if they're going to be here in the community before we start, just, it's got to be done because we all get in trouble when we just go, it's got to be done. Then how come we can't just have the conversation and maybe we can work something out with the college or work something out if we're not in a hurry?
No, that's, that's.
It's not a hurry thing. It was inventorying last fall.
Yeah, I noticed that it was on in, it was dated in September.
Yes, and so this is, this is June, so, you know, out of, out of respect for someone who's created an amazing art project for Paducah, I think that we need to let them know if they're going to be paid this summer and tell them. We also want to talk with you about the future maintenance and training some of our students, you know, because we are old and our, and our muralists or whatever. But I don't think that it's a knee-jerk reaction. I think, I mean, this is what you've been waiting for, for the budget all year and it's been kind of our student that the direction we were going, that we would change all of a sudden 17 years into the project, what we were doing.
We hadn't had any one before.
I think we should, I mean, really, I think we should go ahead with the contract for this year, talk with him, talk about the longevity of the project, how, how we can utilize some of our artists here in Paducah to accomplish that goal going forward from this year.
That sounds very reasonable.
Why don't, why don't we really figure out where we are, you know, if there are contracts or not? You know, the mural can be done in the fall. As you all know, I mean, Herb doesn't paint in the Blazing Avenue because it's so hot and you can't do a great job. And we know this on any, whether we paint houses or murals, to do it in the fall couldn't be a problem. In fact, you might find you get a better job because it's not so hot.
I know he has six projects in the coming season. They all need to be done during summer between now and the fall. There's outside painting. So, you know, that's a consideration with him. All of these, I mean, I wish you'd sit in there like now, so we could ask him and make him know.
Well, the reason I ask, it is an ordinance, requires two readings. I believe they have to be consecutive if I'm not mistaken. So, if we want to take some time here, then we would need to recreate this process. So, if time is an issue, then I want to make sure everybody was aware of that and how that could be impacted if we did not have this on next week.
He is scheduled to be here to start.
He left last year about three o'clock this afternoon. And he gets, he knows what's going on. And if he gets here and we tell him that he's not going to be doing the work this year, then he goes to Portsmouth. He's kind of for a Columbia exception right now. But what do you want? Well, and I'm wondering.
I think they want you all to go to the mic if you would. Isn't that what that goes?
Makes sense.
Yeah. I mean, I'm just sitting here listening, don't know anything about it, but I'm thinking about, he's been coming here for a number of years, he's already clearly planning on being here. We want to have a conversation with him about down the road and the future and building a good relationship and getting some local folks.
Right.
Is it going to improve his chances of wanting to work warmly with us if we just kind of pull the rug out at the very last minute and say, oh, never mind, we don't want you to come this year? I mean, it seems to me wiser in terms of building and continuity of that relationship to let him come and do what he's planning on doing this year and lay the groundwork for that positive continuation and exploration. I mean, I, I don't know why they would be warmly receptive if we just said no.
I get exactly what you're saying, Chip. My confusion is, it's Herb, but Robert's got to be the one to make that.
Because it's Dafford Mural. He works in association with the Dafford Mural.
But he doesn't pay any royalty, doesn't?
Sometimes he does, sometimes he doesn't. It depends on what their agreement is with Dafford Mural.
Dafford Murals is the name and the company that started it. It's an international company, an international artist legally, according to the legal ruling that I've read, it looks like he owns that. He owns the copyright to it and he has to give permission to another artist to touch his work, which is something that I would think our artists in Paducah would understand and want us to honor that agreement that artists would have.
And he works with artists, like he has worked with Miss Perry. He is open to share everything he has. I get a call, you all, at least, every other week from another community, wanting to know how did you all pull that off? That is so cool when you have him do that. And I have a standard thing that I send to him. Send it to some of you all, tell them you've asked about it, tell them how we do it. To be having the conversation when it's time for him to start the project, he officially knows he can start until July 1st, but he wants to come here with everything in order, look at his housing, he wants to live in, he's the one he stayed before in Frieda Fairchild's, you know, home before down there in her furniture department. And he wants to stay down in that area again. It's an arts community. It's a, you know, it's like a family. And I think we need to be respectful of the longevity that we have with this most front and center project that we have here in Paducah. It's about, we are so blessed to have this project and have the quality and to be talking about changing. Do we have a problem? Does anybody have a problem with what he's doing or the quality of his work?
No, I don't have a problem with it. I don't, I don't have a problem with the quality of the work. The whole reason we're having this conversation is, from my perspective, I want, and I told Commissioner Rhodes this, I mean, I would love to go local, have our local guys do the job. I want to make sure that contractually, we, if we're, if we're bound contractually by what we have with Dafford and we can't, and there's no flexibility there, then we have to do what we agreed to do. But if there, if there's some gray area there that we could, we could work where our local artists could do the work, then I'm all for that. So, I mean, that's.
Well, I also told Commissioner Rhodes that I would do my own calls today and my own research, which I did. And I have to tell you that most of the people I, the people I talked to were just as passionate as Roe Morris is tonight about honoring an artist's work and respecting what they do and not having someone else touch it up without that artist's permission, which is what we would be doing if we do that.
That is the price of what we're doing. If we're going to do that, let's do it in the right, you know, let's.
Well, and I think if, if we're going to look at someone else doing that work with his permission, then it can't be, we can't just pick one person.
We should put it out for a bit.
Right, he has to pick the people and he has to train the people.
It's going to take some time. It's a process, it's going to take a while to figure that out. So, the real only question, do we proceed with this contract for this year? If it's your intent, then this.
That would be my opinion.
Back next meeting.
Why wouldn't you kind of get these issues up on the table and then kind of, if you want to give a contract, that's y'all's decision. But to give a contract, then talk about the issues, I'd rather talk about the issues and then talk about a contract.
And we, we won't even vote on this until next meeting.
Well, and that's what I was getting ready to say. He's coming regardless. He's going to be here for a reception, so he can answer questions between now and next Tuesday.
And his reception Saturday is a one-way, he's a one-way reception for you. That's Herb. That's Herb. Robert will come down from Portsmouth. But whatever you all want to do on that, but I'm telling you, if you want Robert here to train people, it's not going to be cheap. If Robert was coming here painting, the $24,000 would be double that.
Really, he has been training people.
Of course he has.
That's what he has been doing all along.
That's why he's given Herb his blessing. That's why he doesn't催他, because he trusts Herb. Herb is dependable. If he says he'll be here, he's here. And if he says he'll do something, he does it. We've developed a relationship with him for the 17 painting seasons we've had. And I've learned to trust him. And as far as where he's here, there's a lot of visitors through all these years. If Herb says he'll show, he shows. He does what he says he'll do and he represents as well.
So, I guess, you know, we'll vote on this in two weeks and we'll have a lot of time to discuss it in between, so.
And meanwhile, what if we tell him to meet with us? And I talked to Murray Runn, where he was going.
This was not, this was not on the final action.
No, this, no, it's not for final action.
Sure, under any event.
We have a period of discussion, both of us.
And if we want to talk with him as a collective unit, then we'll have to have a special meeting.
Or individually, he can come and talk to you all, however you want. He's wide open to do that. He's all about training and learning and sharing.
So, do you all want to meet individually with him before we vote on this? You want to do that? Do you want to meet collectively before we have this on the agenda next time?
I respect what he's done for our community. I don't really have to have a meeting with him. I respect it and honor the agreement that we have.
I mean, I would like to see if we can't do some kind of a deal.
No one is close to that idea.
Yeah.
I think it's a great idea. I'm looking around and it's just like, that's a great idea.
I mean, it doesn't mean we're going to get a deal by the time he starts painting. I get that, but.
So, just ask him to call the office and set up some appointments with whoever would like to speak with him, okay, while he's here.
He's happy to do that.
I'll be glad to speak with him. All right. Thank you.
Oh, I'm here.
All right, a couple of things. In conjunction with the construction that is about to commence at the new boat launch, we have a temporary crossing over the new stretch of the bike path that is built up sufficient to. that is built up sufficient to protect against damage to the concrete surface of the bike path. After discussing that, at some length, we determined that the appropriate thing to do is to close that source, portion of the bike path that that crossing covers, as well as some feet on either side of it, it'd be a total of 100 feet. So we are going to have a barricade there on both sides and put signage on both approaches at the beginnings, as well as hopefully another point in between that and where the crossing occurs, that the bike path will end at that point. So effectively, the city is putting the public on notice that it is not, its wish is that people not cross over that temporary pathway across the bike path.
For how long, Jeff, will that be?
And we're not closing the whole trail. I want everyone to understand that.
You can only go so far.
Right.
And then you'd have to turn around and go back.
Right.
Or either direction.
Walking or...
Within about 50 feet of the crossing on either side.
Is that temporary or throughout the whole extent of this project?
As long as the big trucks are going across it. We've got to protect that concrete.
It's approximately 120-day contract. We'll get it down as soon as we possibly can, but I would say it'd be the majority of that time.
And the reason we're in this situation is because we had to spend that money, that grant money for the Greenway Trail. We had to get it spent. But because of all the environmental problems that we had with the permitting, we didn't get the boat, the boat launch was supposed to be done first. But because of all that, it didn't get completed first. We had to get the Greenway Trail completed. So now they're trying to protect that section and...
It's an unfortunate thing, I mean, it really, really is.
I know it's a disappointment for a lot of people that are using that, so I would just encourage you to try to get it open as soon as you can.
Sure.
We've got from County Park Road to Noble Park that can still be used, is very nice.
And, you know, the greatest portion of that will be beyond the starting point by the convention center. And for anyone that starts at the other end, that's still a pretty good stretch there, coming to that crossing and back, depending on your own aspirations for the recreational outcome you're looking for. It would certainly be long enough for me to jog one way and back, but that'll vary with the individual. But again, it's unfortunate, but given the nature of the crossing and the footing associated with it because it's a dirt buildup with some pretty good-sized rocks on the side, we really don't want people to be, feel like it's safe to try to cross it on foot, so. Other thing, tomorrow, we will be engaging in what we call a Next Step Workshop all day with the commission and directors. We are proud to announce that our citizen satisfaction survey is in, something we commissioned over a year ago. The intention here is to solicit feedback from the public on how well we do as a city and take that information and use it in the decision-making process about service delivery at all levels, from the policy level down to the operational level and management level. So we think it is a very responsible thing to do, to launch a comprehensive citizen satisfaction survey like this. It's something that hasn't occurred, at least in recent memory, with the City of Paducah. There's a saying that says you can't manage what you don't measure, so this is a way to help us measure the public's view of how well we do. And it is something that can become the foundation for our, again, not just our management decisions, programming decisions, budgeting decisions, but also we could start a benchmarking process with a report card process, if you will, and measure changes over time. So if we are so inclined, this database will give us the opportunity to not only make decisions to achieve higher outcomes, if you will, but also resurvey from time to time and trendline that to see how we are doing on a trend line. So we're very excited about that and appreciate the city commission's willingness to be part of this and appropriate the funds for it. And their active participation in this workshop tomorrow with the management team, I think will ensure that we come out of that with some identified areas of priority to work to, to improve upon, so very, very excited about that. Last thing is, I'd like to have an executive session to discuss...
Okay, any commission comments? Public comments, I don't think we had anything.
I have a quick question. In regards to the Greenway Trail, I also had an email about the farmer's market and the insurance. Did we ever get that worked out?
You know, we, we're continuing to work on that. Identified at the staff level today, a real possibility that there, there may be a product that was actually, product being, I don't mean that in the sense of the good, but an insurance product that may have been developed specifically for farmer's markets and the product liability issue there. So we are actively investigating that and hopefully that will bear fruit. Oh, that was a bad one.
And vegetables.
In that, there is something available that's fairly reasonable that we could put in place for the rest of the year. And if that is available, we could put in place for the rest of this year. As far as I'm concerned, we would make that a structural component of the program going forward. So we're anxious to see how that materializes.
So we don't have to have insurance? So we're going to the point where we will not require the farmers to have insurance? That's the end game?
Well, we are investigating what is out there for the city to purchase to cover our concerns in that area, but it would be essentially blanket coverage for all participants. We would, we would probably need some information for participants to complete the application, but we're optimistic we could work through that.
I enjoyed being down there Saturday and speaking with the gentleman that has the organic beef and pork and the bacon. All the bacon was gone by the time I got there, you know, where's the bacon? And he lives up in Livingston County, and I happen to know some of his family, so it was good talking with him. He's got a lot of great ideas about some interesting things we can do for the farmer's market. And I'd love to get him involved because he's young, got good ideas. And spoke with Mrs. Garrett, so it was nice to talk with her about her farm. And I asked her why she had tomatoes. And she said, "Because we start all of our things in the greenhouse." So when we put our plants out there this big, when I put mine out there this big, so... Everybody come down and see the farmer's market this weekend. All right, who has the executive session, Commissioner Rhodes?
I move that the board go into a closed session for discussion of matters pertaining to the following topics. Number five, a specific proposal by business entity or public discussion of the subject matter would jeopardize the location, retention, expansion, or upgrading of a business entity as permitted by KRS 61.811-G.
Second, city clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.